Welcome everybody to the work session October seventh, twenty twenty-four, nine thirty AM. Secretary of Treasury.
Scott Harrods.
President.
Ed Warner, President, President, Chip Maron.
Here.
President. Joe McLaughlin.
Here.
Matt Parsons.
President.
We're all here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Nice to see everybody. We have some discussions on. We'll get right into business. Maple Avenue, Neuyak Creek Boat Launch.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I talked to Tim Quake on this, and I can say I did too. I didn't realize we were both doing it at the same time, but it's gonna be rectified for now. And then we'll have further discussion about all these ramps at the end of these roads.
Well, you're talking the dirt ramps that we've been traditionally maintained, but not necessarily, I know you're sitting there. Do you have something to say?
No, no.
You wouldn't gotta come up if you wanted to talk.
I can give you a good summation of it. Basically, these are road ends that have evolved into launching ramps for the local duck hunters, fishermen, kayakers, and people like that. They're some in private communities, some in, you know, just town roads. And basically, working with the past town engineer Walter Bundy on trying to rectify some of these roads with the ability for the public to continue to use them. The town engineer had ideas of putting guardrails on, on the ends of them with these rock encasements with grass plantings for like a filtering system for the, you know, the runoff from the water. And it would preclude everybody from using the roads. And so I went with Walter Bundy when he was the town engineer, and I asked him, you know, to evaluate each road, in Hampton Bays especially, so that we had a launching ramp and also this mechanism to catch the road runoff. Many of these roads are just, you know, basically dirt ramps that, you know, the trustees, some of the villages has helped out to put stone and other, other material there so they don't wash out so readily. What happened last summer is we had a seven-inch rainfall in Neuyak, and a lot of the road ends, even with the stone that we placed there washed out. So I talked to our special counsel Jill Lombardo, and with, you know, the help of the board here, I'd like to make a list of all these road ends and, you know, evaluate them and maybe have some kind of, you know, something in our blue book that either us or an IMA with the villages, Ox pasture in Boatswitz Landing in Southampton, Cove Road in Bluff Point, in Sag Harbor, Sag Harbor Village. So there's, you know, there's, they're multi-jurisdictional, you know, territories, so I just.
Just do like a memorialization in the blue book so it makes it clear, especially for the future boards in terms of what the responsibilities are and what the access points are because they're not on the general list. They are something historically that's been taken care, but you want a more formal memorialization.
Some of them are on our access list, but some of them are just, you know.
Traditional use.
Yes, but not on the list. So, so I would like to memorialize them so that way the public will have use of them in perpetuity. No, that would be the villages because we switched Schinacock Road for the Muntz Point property. And when Mr. Smith didn't want people launching next to his house, so we, the trustees and the village, yeah. But, but I'll make a list of them throughout the whole town and everybody else can give, contribute.
I could just add, it's consistent with the mission of the trustees, which is to encourage and provide access to the water. If we've traditionally been doing it, then we should.
Continue.
We should look at it with an eye towards making the, the facilities something that people will be aware of and use.
Memorialize it.
Yep.
Just make the public aware that these traditionally were always access points where you usually needed a four-wheel drive, you know, we're not gonna make them pop and, you know, perfectly accessible. They're just access to the water and, you know, use at your own risk.
Right, right.
You know?
Precisely.
Also, we have, if we undertake to do something, we have to undertake to do it in the right way and not create a situation where we might be in trouble. So.
Thank you. All right, we've done with that. We'll move on to trustee Parsons.
Yes. So I've had a lot of community interests in Shore Road in Remsenburg. We've had Timmy and the crew down there twice this year, most recently last week because the road, speaking of roads that end in the bay. This roadway is being undermined actively.
Is this the one you brought to our attention last time?
Yeah, and since Timmy and the crew went there in the spring to clean it all up, and over the summer it eroded away enough that there was all these big hunks of asphalt again that the community had been pulling out of the water and piling up on the shore. And it's, it's an ongoing problem. But also the community is concerned that the sand that used to be here is being washed away, and you can actually see it accumulating a little bit to the east. James, if you could go a little bit to the east there, that canal there, they're asking if that sand can get pumped up onto that beach. I'm saying, I'll see, I'll see what I can do. So, I mean, it's kinda like your Fort Pond issue where it's, you know, it's.
Oh, Fort, Fort, yeah, yes, yeah.
You know, I don't know.
That could be private.
Could be private.
Yeah.
I mean, now it's private. The inside of it is.
We gotta do some research.
Yeah, you'd have to find out.
Permits and all this other jazz. It's not as easy as it looks. So.
That's very similar to what has happened over in Schinacock Hills, just west of Crab Road, between Crab Road and Fornian Tepi Street. There's a dug canal, and that's exactly what happened to that dug canal. All the material that was on the beach eventually entered into the mouth of that canal, completely closed it off. And over the last, you know, thirty years, it's all wetlands have started to take over there. So dredging that, that what I'm talking about in Schinacock is almost, it's impossible because there's a wetlands there. It looks like it's very close or almost similar to what.
I mean, yeah, you see there's, there's grass.
Is that a breakwater right there, knowing?
It is. It's a wooden breakwater. It's kinda dilapidated.
President? Trustee Parsons, I, I was copied on that.
Oh, oh, so you wanna add to this? But initially.
I think the county wants it.
Good morning, Aaron, Aaron Turchuni in West Hampton. I'm actually past Commodore of the West Hampton Yacht Squadron, which is just to the far left where you see the tennis court on that aerial photo. And I was copied on the communication to trustee Parsons. So quite familiar with this spot. You're correct. That's a deteriorated breakwater. And what's happening is when the breakwater was intact, it held all the sand in that compartment that extends. If you go a little bit farther west, please, James, you see there's a compartment by the breakwater of the yacht squadron, and then there was a similar one that came off that point on the right. And that kinda contained that whole beach system in a cell. As the breakwater deteriorated, that's when the sand began leaking around the corner and filling in the channel. So it's, from my assessment, and I listened to everything that was said, and I agree, the, the solution here is twofold. You can't just take the sand, pick it up, and move it because it's gonna migrate right back into that channel. So to, and I know people don't like to hear this, but to extend that breakwater a little bit in order to create a stable beach between the two breakwaters and stop the shoaling.
Extended or repair it?
Repair it.
I mean, extending it.
No, I mean, just when I say extended, right now it ends pretty much at the shoreline, the, the new section. You can see where it returns back.
Yeah.
That's the new section, and then where it goes seaward is the old section that needs to, that, that really needs to be repaired.
I mean, the seaward section is where the leak is.
Yeah.
And I know that when we had a leak in the Schinacock inlet.
Yeah.
On, on the, on the east side, like it was, it was a matter of like weeks, and it just blew right, it sucked all the sand right out to the right to the do line. So it's probably a similar problem that's happened.
On a micro scale.
On a micro scale because it's the bay.
Do, do we know who owns that breakwater?
No. So we gotta figure out who put that in on it.
There's a permit for it because this has been an ongoing discussion long before even I was here.
But that canal is, like Eddie said, is might, might not be salvageable if it's wetlands.
Well, the, the, the white colored material is all sand. And then, I haven't been back in there in a while, but I'm happy to go back, take some photos and share them with, with the board. But certainly the sand can be dredged. If there is wetlands, it can't be dredged, but if it's upland, beach grass, for example, that's now protected.
And how much interest do you have from the homeowners on that creek to actually address this?
A lot.
So they're gonna have to make the charge.
Yeah. And we could work with them. I think the object of, of Mr. Smythe's letter to the board was, hey, this is a problem. We'd like to figure out how to solve it with you.
Well, we're gonna get two, a twofold solution. One would be water quality in that dug canal, and second, the environmental benefit and the public benefit to beach free nourishment along there.
And having a nice stable beach because all those last four houses, which are private, they're all eroding terribly.
And that breakwater that's currently there that's falling apart doesn't need to be that long.
No, it doesn't need to be that long. In fact, I can work with whomever and, and get one that's the proper length in order to maintain a stable beach form.
As long as the hole is patched, like that's the major.
That's the key.
That's the major issue, the one that's like right just, just seaward of the beach itself is all, that's where your problem is.
That's where it's all going. Yeah.
In the intertitle, where all the wave action hits.
Yeah. So thank you, trustee Parsons, for bringing that up, and I'm glad I was here to add a little bit to it.
Thank you.
Call upon me, and I'll relay to Mr. Smythe the conversation, and of course, if anything comes up in the meantime, please reach out to me or him.
But you gotta get all of them to be like we want this sand somewhere else. And then it's like ideally the other perfect spot for the sand.
Permit.
Permitting time, two years.
Does that also include pumping the sand, and they gotta put the bill in the breakwater too?
Yeah, we gotta make the determination.
Yeah, see whose it is.
Exactly. We've got a lot of work to do on that. We can't, you know, we're talking about a big project.
All right, you got something else there, trustee?
I do. I wanna let everybody know that Timmy and the crew were able to move the floating wetland out of the Jackson Avenue yard. They were able to install it temporarily along the shore at Slubberbrook Pond. We've got signage up on it, so we'll be ready to plant it and position it next spring for its growth. And if this goes well, it'd be a really good thing, and we could potentially, you know, there was to talk about relocating those ones in Mill Pond as well. If this goes well, we can point a home for them. So, yeah, so if anyone has any ideas on species or things that we could do with this floating wetland, you know, we have some time.
Isn't there a whole list of plantings? I know Anne, who was involved in this when we did the one in Mill Pond, and I think she had a whole list of plantings that they used.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to her.
Yeah, she should know because she actually went down and did the maintenance of it, took the, you know, the dead stuff off of there and cleaned them up a couple of times.
And then originally, wasn't there a, didn't they work with Pickrell on this, is like growth rates?
Yes.
Yeah, growth rates based on like how much nitrogen and phosphorus is in the water.
Yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole study, there's a whole basis on that floating wetland.
The use of it.
The use of it was not just for clarifying the water, it was also a scientific study of quantifying how much phosphorus and nitrogen was in the bay. So like they could base it on growth rates, I believe, was on the roots, but I couldn't be wrong.
We can reach out to Chris Pickrell from Cornell.
Chris Pickrell would help you.
Yes.
I'd, I'd say that is your first contact.
Correct.
What do you want, what should I put in this wetland? He's super helpful.
Correct.
Yeah, we're working on several things with Mr. Pickrell. All right.
Must be a doctor right now.
You can call him a doctor. Anybody else? Let's see. We can move right into general permit, applications for determination. I have Robert Reichenback Jr., fifteen Ramana Surfside Environmental. I see Daphne's here.
I almost wasn't.
You're almost.
Because I didn't see this until five fifteen on Friday. I'm moving to my office right now, so.
Busy.
A little disorganized.
No good email alerts?
We're moving your office, right?
A little crazy.
All right. So we want to install approximately a hundred linear feet, seven point five feet wide angle, partial subgrade natural stone and sand to remediate restored eroded sand beach in portions of the existing developed property. Shoreline erosion restoration comprised of forty-four cubic yards of eighty percent cobalt, twenty percent sand mix, a hundred linear feet of five hundred pound toe stone, almost twenty-eight cubic yards of three to four hundred pound stone, and almost ten, or just over nine cubic yards of eight to ten inch core stone, and twenty-eight cubic yards of twelve feet bedding stone. Close final grades to be planted with beach grass plugs, twelve inches on center.
Yes, so this is a classic case of unreveted property stuck between two bulkheads and taking the brunt of storm events to their property. There's actually a photo I submitted with my application that shows some of the effects during storm events, that it's the rack line you can see is very high, it's very close to their swimming pool, actually, so it's becoming a detriment to the structures. So we tried to come up with a plan that would mitigate the effects of this, these storm events, doing like a typical shoreline restoration with varying degrees of rocks and filter fabric, and then, you know, covering it over with sand and planting over beach grass. So we are showing it basically at mean high water and going landward. Right now, he's got, he's trying to mitigate it himself, and it's, it's not working. He's just got like some buckets there with sandbags and stuff like that. But it's, it's going pretty far behind that fence that you see in the photos.
What's the difference in the grade of the rock wall versus the bulkheads on either side?
Uh, I believe it should be, hold on. We have it going up to five, which is basically, basically five feet higher than mean high water. It should be.
No, the original, like currently, currently, what's the, the height difference between the, the bulkhead and this, this wall?
Oh, it's pretty significant. Uh, on, on the, what's that, south side, that, that bulkhead is higher. That one was given a permit to increase the height, I think five to twelve or eighteen inches from what it was previously. So that's part of the reason that, you know, they're not getting any water on their property. I think the guy on the north side may see a little bit of water, but it's mostly going to my pond's property. But you can see in my photos that the bulkhead to the south is, was taken at low tide. It's pretty significantly different in elevation where the one on the north side is less significant. So basically what we're planning would be in keeping with the guys to the north and probably still be lower than the one to the south, but would.
I've seen multiple projects that went to this, where you have a new construction, this looks like new construction, and you have the town planning board approving the height of elevating on the house, and then the, the grade is increased, and then it pitches to the one person. I'm guessing that this, this guy's house, has, is this new construction as well, his house?
His, no.
No, so it's like his grades has stayed the same, whereas the neighbors have raised the grade.
I don't know if the neighbor had new construction, but they definitely, both neighbors sought permits from this board for their bulkheads. So now we're facing a problem as the monkey in the middle trying to, uh, only.
When you look at this picture, it doesn't look that, that much of a difference between this bulkhead and the grade of these, so.
Oh, there isn't.
But the other side does.
How, how are you doing with the other regulatory boards?
Uh, they've all just received, no one has given any.
So you don't know where you're at yet?
No.
When was, when was the neighbors raised, you know, when, when those book were?
Unfortunately, I have that information, but I do not have it with me because I was scrambling to get this together.
The northern, the northern property is an old cement wall.
Uh, the northern property is a vinyl bulkhead.
You have a picture of it right here, and it's a.
Uh, well, beyond the vinyl bulkhead.
Oh, it's a return.
Yeah.
So they're just maintaining the old return.
It's a cement. Now, the wetlands that, uh, grasses that are currently there, how are you gonna contend with them?
Well, they're pretty minimal, uh, and they're a result from obviously the water sitting on this property longer than.
I'm talking about the ones that are down further where that's in the bog. There's an old piece of bog here, and you can see it very clearly in this picture that, you know, during the summertime, there's, you know, sputana there, and it's, it's a flourishing wetlands. Are you just gonna cover it up?
Well, the, the.
What is the extent of the project that you're going to propose it?
These are the ones that were in the file, right?
Oh, then somebody else has mine.
Why just?
No, these must be mine. They're not stamped. Should I stamp everything?
Yeah, they should be.
Do you sign and stamp either?
Yeah, I don't know. They were, they were in the file.
It was, I, I've been at this property a couple of times because I had a friend of mine who's a construction person, and he asked me to take a look at it. And, you know, I did have concern because there's, you know, there's, you know, wetlands there that, you know, this project, are you gonna cover them up? Which is a net loss of wetlands, and I know the DUC would not be in favor of that because the wetlands are considerably seaward of where the stone and the fences.
Well, no, I don't think we would because I see the bog there. The bog is right in front of the, the bulkhead line.
That's, I'm asking you where the project, I, I see, I, I, the stones that are currently there are to the south of the, where the bog is. And that's grass and, you know, it's more of a self-help kind of a situation that he moved some of those, those stones there. But the material that, where the cursor is right now, that's, that's what I'm concerned about, that wetlands.
What I'm saying is that we would start just landward of that, that everything would come up from there. Yeah, because if you look at the plan.
And, and the whole project would go behind it, and are you considering any wave reverberation coming off your project that would scour that wetlands out?
I think you're gonna have to go considerably landward of that.
Well, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, you know, to say that you're gonna install major construction, you know, windows, wetlands, and, and you're gonna, you're, you're gonna protect them is, is kinda a little far fetched.
Well, I'm here to start the conversation because I have tried to start it behind the scenes.
I would say kick it.
This was the easiest way to get something accomplished, so I'm here.
I would say kick, kick, kick the wall landward to where the existing rock wall is personally.
Yeah, I'm glad that you can because, you know, this way you've got input from everybody, plus you still have the other regulatory authorities to get through, so this is good.
So, yeah, we can move it landward. Uh, that's not an issue. It's just, that, that's why I'm here. We gave a starting point, and now it's a matter of what.
I mean, it makes a very good point with that wetland, right? Land, I mean, that's gonna stop you, and we're not gonna be the only ones that say no.
I mean, if you go down in now, you're gonna see there's a, there's a, there's a flourishing wetlands.
Yeah. So I would say kick it landward to almost where the existing wall is, raise the grade of it, and, and, you know, raise the grade equal to that of the highest bulkhead. I don't know. Anybody else have any ideas on?
Now, the property that you're working on, what is the elevation of that property cons, to the, is it considerably lower than the adjoining properties? Because I, as I remember being down there, it's kinda like, almost like a bowl. So if you raise up the, the land, the seaward end of the property with a rock revetment, and you get overwashed, you're gonna have a pond.
Yes.
Which is.
That is another concern that we have.
That's, you know, it's almost kind of productive.
Like blowout sometimes, isn't it?
Yeah, and also you're gonna get to your neighbors, it's gonna go off to the sides and could cause, you know.
Well, not if they're higher still.
Yeah, depends how much water builds up there and how much elevation you have of the rock revetment. If the rock revetment is higher than the adjoining property owners, then the water's gotta go somewheres.
And that's why my client is feeling the brunt of the, the issue right now because it's got nowhere to go, and it's probably eroding out their property in, in the process. So.
Well, according to that picture, the neighboring property is quite a bit higher. It looks like they increased the grade when they did the bulkhead, the top picture.
Yeah.
Listen, you know, these.
So, so they, you're gonna have to get some elevations of the adjoining, adjoining properties and see if you can, I, that, I mean, obviously, this would be an upland detail of whether you could level the grade of that property equal to that of the other ones when you do this project, but that would be out of our jurisdiction.
That's.
Well, but the whole, the whole. Right. See, the whole thing is, you know, where you're, where you're starting still being in our jurisdiction. Obviously, we're not looking to build a bulkhead that's not made out of, you know, vinyl or what have you. You're looking to attenuate the wave action and lessen the erosion, not create an issue with the wetland that's already existing seaward, right? And you also don't want to be pushing water, you know, to either one of the property owners. So it's critical that you get, um, that you check all these boxes and you get an elevation that's gonna, you know, not create those issues or not do harm to the existing wetland. So I mean, stopping water from getting totally on that property is gonna be difficult. But I think the fact that they, you know, you could lessen the effects of that occurrence is really what the key is, I think you're trying to achieve. So I think, you know, is to go back to the drawing board a little bit, factoring in what the concerns of the board, you know, what they are, what you've heard here from everybody. All good, valid points, and at the same time, as you're aware, balancing out the requests from everybody else that's gonna have a request or an opinion or suggestion on this from the other regulatory agencies.
Daphne, did they also, did they have a prior consultant that they were working with?
I don't know.
I remember someone else coming before us with this conversation. I believe it was on this property. Am I right, James?
Not sure either, but I, I think you got, you know, you got a good conversation start, and I think you got a little work cut out for you in every direction, but I think you got some good direction here now in terms of what the concerns.
James, do we have a, a G I S map going back a couple of years on that property, just to see how it's corroded? Yeah, see. Yeah.
Flip it back. That was right after the hurricane.
Yeah, it's getting skirted out, yeah.
Right after the hurricane.
But my client is basically, you know, now seeing what month it is, going, oh geez, we're, we're in for another year, and he's like, you know, nobody wants to wake up and see.
Yeah, you're not gonna block it all out like it's a bulkhead made out of stone. You're gonna, you're just gonna lessen, you know, the creek, lessen that erosion.
Unless you elevate the whole property, you're gonna see water right almost up to the, up to the pool. That's, that's what's gonna happen. Because if you put a rock wall there without putting some elevation of the upland between the house and that, and that rock wall, you're gonna have that water just, it's gonna come.
That's gonna push outside of our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Right, so then how am I, um, feeling with that? Am I getting a permit from you first?
Well, that, that's your.
Yeah, I would work with us and.
I would find out whether you could raise the elevation of the property before you go spending the money on a, on increasing the bulk on the stone because like Ed said, it's kind of useless.
And I don't see, but she really, they, they really don't have an option, though. They have to find some way to mitigate the continued erosion. They have to mitigate that erosion. They've got to attenuate that wave energy to preserve as much of their property as possible without creating the concerns of this board. So I think that that's a good starting point. But the thought process, thinking that you're gonna block all that water out, I, I don't see that as a possibility, right? So that being said, you know, take what everybody said and, and kinda try and re, redirect that. At the same time, try and get feedback from, from the others, right? To, that way you're not, you know, spinning your wheels all over the place here.
I think the DUC is gonna have concern with it because of the wetlands being seaward of the project. So you'd have to really make that project, almost soften it up so, you know, you get rid of the wave reverberation going back so it doesn't wash the wetlands that is currently out, area out of there.
Well, that, that was what I was just gonna say.
It's, the bog stops halfway down the property.
Because with, with.
The peat bog, so that's why it's still there. When you get south of that. The peat bog, so that's why it's still there. When you get south of that.
Yes, right, so that's not gonna work out very well in reality. It's not gonna stay. It's not gonna stay. Okay. It's not. You could, you could make all the drawings you want. I, I just don't see it working out, but.
Not only that, last year we had an unrealistic, uh, amount of easterly winds. It was like, uh, three times a week we had an easterly windstorm, so that, from the Ponkawak Bridge to your client's property, that's the fetch that you have to look at every, every storm and it was like one after another, after another, after another. That's why they get, suffered such bad erosion there.
I think that it has to be realistic expectations.
I, I think we can work on a project here, just, you know, you know, I think you've gotten some notes here, so.
I think you got good feedback from everybody.
Does she have any others on?
I have three of those.
Alright, so we'll hold this one. We're gonna hold, we're, we're holding, we're holding this one, obviously. You wanna do her others?
Yeah.
You have Thomas, uh, no, you have Ocean View.
Ocean View.
Yeah, so they're all, these are all, uh, very different, very interesting projects that I have here today. Uh, so Ocean View X, this is sixteen Ocean View Drive in Shinnecock Hills. The, um, property is part of Shinnecock Beach Road, so I'm here because, uh, I believe you have full jurisdiction over everything that happens in Shinnecock Beach Road.
Correct.
So, um, my client is redeveloping the property and, um, I submitted something last on October second. Just wanna make sure if you have the, yes, that's the right.
October third, yes. Yep.
Um. They're reconstructing their existing residence, but with that, there's a few things that are already existing in Shinnecock Beach Road that they'd be removing. This is all on the northern, yes, northern side of the easement. Um, this is also a slope as most of them are, so it's at the highest parts of the slope where, uh, they would be removing some wood steps and decking. Um, there's a wood tie wall that they would like to rebuild in, in place. Uh, there's new steps that will be accessing the new residence. Um, the main thing is that there's an existing, um, wood walkway that goes down toward their existing legal, um, bulkhead and deck with, uh, access stairs.
Yep.
So they're gonna maintain the deck with the access stairs, but they would like to remove the wood walkway that kinda hugs that westerly property line and they're planning a new somewhat meandering, um, wa- walkway that's going more east down the grade, uh, from where they'll be exiting the property because there's a pool that's going to be put in on that westerly side. Uh, so instead of hugging the pool and going straight back to that existing walkway, they would like to come off the side of this, uh, little grass area. And then there's a pool enclosure fence that we're also putting, uh, as close into the easement as possible.
So when you say remove the walkway, the, is it a wooden walkway currently and they're gonna replace it with a wooden walkway?
Yes, accurate.
And they wanna move it?
They're gonna take out that straight, well, that angry part and it's gonna come more from that turf area that you see off the left side and kinda go down the slope.
Good, sure. It's, it's, it's like meandering.
Any old ones, the old ones permitted?
Yes.
Already?
I, that I don't know.
That I, yeah, we, we got, I mean, you can say yes, but I.
I believe it is. They had, they did a covenant, uh, when they redid all of this stuff a number of years ago. Uh, well, it was their prior owner did a, one of the covenants for the easement.
Sand, sand agreement, sand partnership agreement?
No, for, um, just to basically.
Legitimize?
Yeah, to say that they know they're within the easement.
Okay. Can, can you get us the paperwork so we can have our.
It should be in the package. I don't have it with me. Maybe I did for them.
How long ago was it?
Couple of years, not that long. I should have the copy here. Yeah. Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, I was on the board, yeah.
There was.
Twenty nineteen, that, that, that size of that deck was already approved.
Yes. Yeah, because the survey that goes with it shows exactly what's there right now. Do you have it indoors? Do you have my copy?
We have a certificate of compliance in twenty twenty one. There it is. See, I don't have it.
You should have it.
Let's see it.
I definitely submit two copies.
Right, so as long as it's, it's, it would, we've worked in the past because, you know, as of like current, it seems like we're trimming down the size of these landward decks, I mean, these landward decks on the bulkhead, correct?
Yes, especially the ones right on the water.
So, so the, the pur- purpose is to keep that in its entirety and not even touch that. It's just a walkway going to.
The upland walkway is the one you wanna change? Well, that's out of our jurisdiction.
No.
Well, it's not because it's easy.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we have the agreement, Daphne. I have it.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, it's not in the regula- it's outside, so we'll, uh, we'll let our attorney look it over and, uh, make sure.
I, I actually have met with Joe on this.
Yeah, which is coming up to.
Thank you.
Yeah, give this to you.
Yeah, Daphne, Daphne's. As long as this is anchored, I know Ed's gonna kinda amend what I said, as long as they know that this deck that's there existing is.
Anchored down?
Anchored down and properly attached, so we're not gonna see it in the bay, in a, in a northeast there, um, I don't, I don't know.
It is a pretty high bulkhead. It is, it's a pretty high bulkhead, so it's not gonna be like some of the other ones, but it has to be built properly.
There's plenty of steps to get up there, so it's pretty high.
Yeah.
For the record, Daphne and I have been consulting about this for months, so it's pretty well vetted and I've spoken with you a few times about it as well, Ed, so I think everything was at the point where she could then file the application for the work.
Yep. No, I remember.
Yeah, so the only reason that I had submitted this revision is because they had some landscape architects come in and that's where they got into this change with the walkway and they needed the pool enclosure fence, so we wanted to show one so that there's no iss- issue with what they're proposing within the easement.
Yeah, this is where it starts to get east out of Berry Road and it gets pretty.
Yeah, it starts to get steeper and steeper.
Yes, yes, yep.
Each one actually goes to the east of it.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Alright, alright, so we move this ahead with Joe's looked at the agreement and everything, so we're good. Alright?
Advance it, yeah. This one you could advance.
But, uh, we do need some answers.
Okay. Now, please.
Side profile for the stairs.
Yes, so we'll need some more stuff, so we'll advance a pending receipt of.
So you want, uh, elevation of the walkway? Uh, and stamped by the landscape architect is okay?
That should suffice, right?
Architects, yeah. Yeah, design professional, that's what we're moving.
Yeah.
Okay.
Either one or the other, so, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so next I have a dune walkway on, um, Flypoint Road. Yes.
I drove down the beach on this one, just, just, just to clarify on this, I, this is old buddy, this is the old steel bulkhead, this is one of those.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I noticed towards that end and I didn't get a good look at it of, there was about where that property is, there was a lack of maintenance of the dune in front of the steel bulkhead and there was no s- there was no snow fencing. I'm not saying that it was this property, but all the adjoining properties next to it had, wasn't there an agreement that you had to maintain the dune in front of the bulkhead?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, every spring it needs to.
Okay, I also didn't see any walkways going down in front of the bulkhead. This would be the only walkway that has a staircase.
Really? Cause there's a part, we mimicked this off of a permit from somebody else.
I could be wrong. I, I mean, I was driving quick, but then, yeah.
To the west.
Yeah, to the west. I mean, I don't know how far down the road you are in this to where the.
I think that guy right there has stairs, yeah.
Yeah, that's stairs.
That, we kinda mimicked our plan off of what was approved for that.
Okay, and that's the only set of stairs on that, correct?
No, I think there's others. Again, I don't have my research.
Everybody else seemed to kinda just, yeah.
Quite honestly, my client wants to do something as minimal as possible. She doesn't really want.
I know, it was gorgeous what they had before. It was gorgeous what was there before. I was surprised she even wanted to change it.
Well, the thing is that they're planning to elevate the house.
Yeah.
Um, we have coastal erosion application in with the building department and planning, uh, so there, the plan is to elevate the house to be FEMA compliant, maintaining it as one story and, um, then this way it would, the walkway would come right off of the house, uh, over the dune.
Rather than the old kind of like natural looking.
Basically, right now it's a sand path and they have a rollout walkway.
Yeah.
I don't know that you guys want that anymore.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I love the simplicity of the rollout walkway, but, but as far as this, um, the steel bulkhead there, first we have to make sure that there is a dune management plan in front of this piece of property.
There is an agreement, I think it's seven hall.
There's an agreement and somebody's nailing the agreement. Oh, I don't know if it's that piece of property or piece of property just to the west. Everybody else has snow fence and everybody else has the steel bulkhead covered up and there's one stretch there where it's, the steel bulkhead is showing up and we're not still there, so.
Well, they usually do, they usually, they usually do the sand maintenance at the very end of the winter season, just before pullover show up.
No, I understand, but some people are making an effort and some people aren't. Some people have snow fencing, some people don't, so some people have dune grass, some people don't. Um, I don't, I don't know which, I was just driving from checking the cut, so I don't know, I'm not accusing this homeowner of it. Um, the other thing is.
Well, it's good to point out the fact that people are not maintaining that because that what exacerbates the issues.
And then the, the other is, is.
I can see some snow fence in one of my photos.
You might be in the clear. I'm not, I'm not, I just wanna make sure.
It's not necessarily this property, but noting that some others in the stretch.
Some others.
Add to the erosional issues when that wave energy is pounding.
And you said this is gonna, I, as I remember quickly when I looked over this application, it's going to be removable stairs, correct?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Because that, that stretch is, there's a good chance that you're gonna lose them no matter what, so.
Yeah, so basically they would take them out every year and put them up on the house.
That's good.
So.
Can you show the, uh, the bulkhead on your plans?
We, oh, in my plan? Oh, it's on the survey. I know they updated the survey to show it.
Well, technically it's supposed to be covered up.
Uh, yeah, the bulkhead, you can't see it right now. Um, yeah, I mean, we can add that to our plans.
Might be helpful just to see, you know, how much.
Seaward, seaward of the.
There's nothing left down there. We're down to almost where it was, you know, we're down to the bulkhead again.
Yeah, but having it shown there, that's a, that's a fixed point.
I got, I got Mr. Aram Turchunian. I, I had a feeling that he has a, I didn't wanna, I almost was gonna reach out, but I, I figured I'd let you just sit there and listen.
Oh, yeah, we got a little bit of pumping's going on, right?
Yeah, Aram Turchunian, uh, this time on behalf of the, uh, Great Hampton Watermelon Erosion Control District. Uh, December one, this board recently approved a permit and that beach is gonna get a lot bigger.
The beaches, but what about the dunes?
Well, uh, that will provide the opportunity for the snow fence and thus the dune.
Yeah, I mean, there could be snow fencing now. What I'm get- I understand. I do, I do the sand project, so that's why I'm not in a total panic because what has happened there and I, um, I have had an adjacent homeowner approach me because of the NeCox, um, you know, the conservation and, um, they were blaming the cut on the sand going in the cut, so I was like, the cut was closed long before the storm. The problem now is that the grade, as you know, because you're doing most of the survey, and the grade is pitching towards the dune.
Yeah.
And what's happening is if we get a storm surge, it's going over and then making basically the kiddie pools like we used to have and it's wiping the dune out.
Right.
Or, so the, the problem is, is the grade is reversed, inverted almost. So I'm sure when you pump sand, that's gonna help and mitigate the issue to get the grade back to slanted towards the ocean.
Correct.
But, like I said, there's still a lack of effort, right? Some homeowners in front of that steel bulkhead to try and maintain a, a dune.
Understood, and hopefully this will give them some incentive.
Incentive to possibly be like, yeah, maybe we wanna try and protect it, so I would.
Well, I think they would do the project after the sand was pumped on the beach.
Yeah, that's what I would do the project.
So you can get a, you could really evaluate what's going on there.
Yeah.
And I'll be, uh, you know, keeping this board up to date when that project gets underway.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I was, I was looking at you sitting there, Aram. I didn't wanna put you on the spot.
So we just have, every, basically everybody on the, uh, a board has to agree that we're fine with an elevated walkway and we wanna make sure that the, that the, um, that the staircase is in fact removable. And then, um.
Railing situation like on that, is it?
Well, when we showed them stairways, like they're that way, oh, no, we took them off. We had them, we had them minimally at first and then we just removed them.
So it's, it's consistent to what we've approved before and along these.
Then is there any way we can draft in it that, that the dune in front of the, the bulkhead is going to be made, once the project is, is final? That the, the dune is gonna be there in front of the bulkhead?
Well, we can't do that until they do the beach nourishment and then they evaluate it. And, and there's already an agreement with the.
There's already an agreement with those homeowners, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we're covered on that. Yes.
They do have snow fence. It is actually on the survey. And the survey was recently updated.
And then as far as how far out that, I mean, obviously if the dune keeps increasing there and people keep growing the dune out, then what happens with that stairway? Is that stairway gonna be able to go out farther or how, how does that work?
Well, we can't, putting it out further and then you get a storm and then it, it's sand moves and then all of a sudden you can't get.
I mean, we're just right up to the bulkhead is when it's getting out, like right there.
Well, it's almost like a, a pier line in the bay. How far out do you wanna go? And then you get a storm and then the beach gets washed out and you can't get around it and so.
I'd love to see a dune there, but, yeah.
Yeah, well.
That was years ago when there was pines up there, so.
Yeah. I, I think we should, uh, go with what's proposed here now and then once it's, you know, it's gonna be removable, so it's not gonna be a wintertime, uh, issue as far as, uh, beach driving access but, uh, and reevaluate it. If, it needs to be, you know, tweaked a little bit. I'm sure your clients will come back and we can revisit it.
So we'll add the bulkhead to the plans?
Yes.
And then you're saying you're okay?
Is everybody okay with the raised bulk?
Yeah, I think it's consistent to what we've approved before.
I like it doesn't have railing.
And stairs removal.
Yes.
So.
That's fine.
Yes.
Especially in that stretch.
Okay.
Right, good.
Big question.
Uh, last one, and this is a redo.
Yeah, uh, we, we have some soundings for, so east mid, east mid soundings.
Yes, and they should be sufficient to what you were seeking, that they're over, they're both over three feet, three and a half feet. Um, so.
You mean, we, we have a problem with, with the, uh, ramp or the docks or it's good?
Yeah, so, so this one should be okay then, um, for stand plans as well.
So we got everything we need then.
So it's four feet was the depth, right?
Uh, it's three, three and a half on one corner and three foot eight.
Sorry, three. I meant three.
On the other.
Great.
So, um, okay, so I'll get those plans.
Thanks.
Okay, great, so, uh, three and four, I bet.
The other ones, you got a, a lot of work to do on the other one, the other regulatory.
No, I appreciate the feedback. Uh.
You had some good direction.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, have a good day.
You too, happy Monday.
Let's go back up to where we started here, uh, land use ecological for Richard Cheverelli at thirty eight.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Morning Chuck.
I think this is been looked at before by the board, so reconstruction, three hundred and three, three feet of, uh, of bulkhead. Uh, there was a problem with some docks that were not permitted, so at last, uh, conversation, uh, those floats here that we need to replace with one six by twenty float, uh, uh, up against the bulkhead, parallel to the bulkhead. And, um, all the existing. And, um, all the existing, existing third paddocks and stone paddocks are gonna be. Basically taken up and sloped, uh, away from the bulkhead, uh, reconstructed and sloped away.
You guys sent your pictures from this weekend.
Yes, you did. Again, I, I think this is based on the conversations of the board, so.
Right, being up the illegality.
Yes, yes.
No, no, it just creates a big problem for everybody.
The, uh. Behind the bulkhead, is it gonna be this stone splash pad that's currently there?
Yep.
It looks like it's, that's even taking a beating. They have size of, uh, softballs and footballs.
Yeah, no, they, they'll be, uh, ten foot wide, gravel.
Stoney gravel.
I mean, that's a real tough area there.
The existing paddocks are gonna be reconstructed and kind and sloped away from the bulkhead. But they're gonna be ten foot.
Right.
Ten foot sandy gravel.
Okay. Alright.
I'm also here, uh, with Steve Ryder, which is less, uh.
The, the plans are standing.
So it's, it's good to move that?
So we have the last, uh, on the agenda is, uh, Steve Ryder.
Do you want, I'm just making sure we were advancing that last one.
What, I need one more, next Boulevard?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fix this and that's, uh.
Mr. Matt Parsons.
Yeah, we've been working on this quite a bit.
Yeah, I think it's, Steve's a very old friend of mine, uh, got from, uh, very long.
You just look that old.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm older, you know, sure, sure, but, uh.
Sixty-five?
We, uh, in our first, uh, uh, three big dunes where no one was doing it, you know, on our island. You know, crazy stuff, but, but anyway, uh, I noticed had a. Problem with Mr. Shay, um, how to configure, uh, his, his house.
We are the two thousand and four covenant that my wife and I signed and it stated on it that the boardwork, which you approved, could stay there. For what, the one, um, it mentions the boat lift and even a boat cradle, which is no longer there. Um, and so I'd like to keep the boat lift.
In the light posts.
And the light.
And the light.
You know, and then Marty had a problem with the light bulbs. So we were trying to kind of separate what was in his jurisdiction or was in your jurisdiction. You know, the, that canal is, I believe, you know, I mean, obviously, uh, everyone's got lights.
Are they dark sky compliant?
I'm sorry?
Are they dark sky compliant? Because we had an issue in Fort Pond where the neighbor put lights up. And it was permitted by our board, but that was prior to the dark sky compliant lights. Basically, the lights have to go down. He had the lights shining in his neighbor's.
No, they have.
And that was a problem.
We had that problem in other areas that were.
And, yeah.
They were just put up in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, I hardly ever have them on, but that being said, I would change them if they weren't.
Just changing to dark skies compliance.
Yeah, yeah.
That legislation.
If they're sold now that I wouldn't even want to.
Right, just say, just say that, 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 you know, that bothers it up, you know? That you're trying your best.
I just don't want to.
For getting up the boat.
I, I think, I think.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I mean, add that to the cover sheet.
Well, if you're gonna do that, then you're gonna have to. You, you'd be inconsistent with what the town generally does anyway, so you gotta stay dark skies. Well, of course you do, that's.
That's open right now. We have an open committee.
Yeah, of course you do.
Yeah.
So, the covenant that you're, you're speaking of in twenty twenty, two, two thousand and four, correct? We haven't seen that, right? Yet?
No.
You, you just.
Matt Parsons saw it and your attorney saw it.
You saw that, Mark? No, Joe, you saw him?
Once again, I think Joe.
So, so the, so the light posts are on our prior permit?
Yeah.
It's just we would be now, uh, making them dark skies compliant?
Yeah, I mean, that's, certainly there would be a good condition to put on, but we did have a meeting with, uh, trustee Parsons, Mr. Rutter and myself.
So, so we would not be running foul of the covenant that he signed. We would, we would actually be going a step further to where we did with the dark skies.
So we keep the boat left, correct? That's cool.
The boat, yeah.
It's on, and there's a cradle on it, which is not looking there. I didn't have that boat, so I got rid of the cradle.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, I think, I think getting the boat out of the water is a good idea, but that's just me. And then, and then they, the four foot walkway is.
Pros and cons, you know, right, these are dumb.
They sink.
He's finished with boats, he hasn't. Personal situation.
Four foot five walkway is, is out there, correct?
My, I, my recollection, but it, don't, uh, don't.
I just, I'm just saving you the next mess.
Marty didn't ask for the four foot by four foot to go away. He didn't ask particularly for that.
It was only the lift and the lights he was having.
Yeah, and he wants to put a fence.
Yeah, I, I have a question with that, 'cause Marty lately has, has the fences. Going down to the water and I can see the high water, natural shoreline and everything else to keep a wildlife corridor, but, you know.
We need front repair, some repairs.
Right.
There's also access to the canal.
Yeah.
Like this, what happens is the people's dogs would, you know, go and kids.
To keep them back? What are you saying? He wants them down there or back?
No, he wants to remove them.
Well, because generally speaking, and I, I hate, you know, I don't like dancing. I don't like people stepping on my toes and I don't like to step on theirs.
Right.
But the thought is, anything that's seaward of where they're taking that line is like a no-no.
Right.
So if it's a structure that's seaward of that area that he has jurisdiction on, it's generally.
Oh, I, I know that's what it does.
That's what it is.
Just like when, yeah, the neighbor's dog.
That was the question that, that trustee Parsons asked me to sit in on the meeting was just to make sure that this board where we could have the jurisdiction and add jurisdiction, so.
And, and I get with this. There are instances where the fence goes right to the bulkhead, so we would put a self-latching gate, so, you know, if you had a dog and people. Someone broke down and they wanted to move their boat from point A to point B, that they could go up on your bulkhead and just walk the boat up, you know? That, that was the whole reason.
I mean, that's not a bad idea. Is the latch, is the gate, is the gate an answer here that could, that could solve all our.
Well, that's what I've asked one.
Well, Marty wants no, no fence.
Because it's seaward, it's seaward of his line that like takes, he doesn't wanna have any structures there, and I, you know, I.
Nobody understands, but we as a board, you know, like this is our jurisdiction now, correct? This ten feet?
Yes.
Yeah. So us as a board, are we allowed to say that we, we, we agree with a gate for this application?
I'd be throwing a gate. It, but there's a fence up against both sides.
So long as it exists.
We're going, but we're going property by property. We'd have to take the whole neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, it's just some, like, like, the canal makes no sense, 'cause, uh, everybody.
It goes back to the dance.
And you're not gonna have a wildlife corridor or anything either. Yeah, everybody's, everybody's fence goes to the bulkhead. He's just probably the new, the, the new kid on the block that says, I wanna upgrade my bulkhead, correct?
Oh, I wanted to get a permit to build my house and it's all.
Okay, so, but what I'm getting at is you're the, you're the, you're the guinea pig.
Exactly.
Okay, so he's the guinea pig of what every other homeowner on this creek is up against in the future. Okay, and judging by the area that his house is in. I don't see a problem with, uh, that's to the water line with a, a gate that is accessible and open, you know, can be opened.
Absolutely.
As long as pass and repass is maintained. What, you have a safety ladder on this boat? Safety ladder there? On the bulkhead?
There's a ramp. Well, somebody's false said.
Yeah, I mean, if you got a floating dock.
You have to get on a floating dock, and the floating dock is coming out for the winter, staying in for the winter?
No, it stays in.
Six by twenty?
No, it's five by, five by twenty.
Five by twenty. It's just, you know, people, I've seen, I've seen people, you know, oh, flip kayaks over areas and they're trying to figure out, and they can't get back on.
Even getting on a floating dock is difficult.
They, they wanna get up.
I can't.
It's always good to have safety ladders, you know?
It is.
Especially for liability purposes.
So we're just gonna get, basically, we're okay with the four, the four foot walkway, we're okay with the boat lift, we're okay with the lights.
Yep.
And, um, the fence, the fe, they, the fence is where we're all, it kind of seems like we're a little different.
Funny thing is, is, uh, Chris, uh, Christian, what was his name? The, the, in building inspector, Chris, uh, forgot his last name. Chris, Chris and something, and Dave and Angie too. They came out and said, Steve, you gotta have that fence to the bulkhead and even over the bulkhead where, where the edge of the bulkhead is. And it's gotta be four foot high because of the pool. So I did that. I made sure, like, the fence was already there, but I extended it to one foot to go over the dock.
So you had, now you're in between two agencies of the town where you're trying to comply with the safety.
And that same fence was there when I bought the place in ninety-six. I didn't.
So there's no, there's no additional, like, landward of the buffer going the other direction to totally keep that pool safe, is what you're saying?
Out of your pool and then you got somebody that says you gotta remove fence.
The neighbor's got a nasty dog, you know, and, or your dog takes off if there's no fence.
And ask before the insurance company gets.
I don't wanna, I don't want the worst to be set through a lawsuit of a pool of changing the fence because there's a pool in the yard personally.
Actually, they also had me going to my neighbor's. Dave, Dave Candy had me going to my neighbor's, he had a six foot high woodstock cave fence. And the middle rail, he had me cut forty-five degree blocks on all the middle rails and my, I got permission from my neighbor to do that. So that nobody could step there and jump over the fence into the pool, even though my neighbor has a pool. And we're on a six foot deep.
I, I want the gate.
Yeah, well, she's gotta follow the regulations.
I, I did it, I did it without.
It's in your applicant, you gotta modify it.
On the plan.
Yeah.
Right, so you got those conditions changed? They have to be in there?
Yeah, dark skies and a gate, right?
Safety ladder.
Safety ladder.
And the water's all good, like, we don't have a problem with, right, and do you have water out there, fresh water?
Yes.
Cause that's all, that doesn't tie us up.
No.
It doesn't tie up him with the building department or anything. I just, I'm just trying to cover your bases.
I, I agree with you.
Just make sure, you can do, you only wanna do this once, make sure you're okay.
No, and every, every, thank you. And every twenty-something people on that canal have the same things.
No, I know, but you're the guinea pig. You're, you know, you're the one that's, you're taking hits, so. Yeah, as long as you're, like, cause you need an electrician in order to do this.
I'm a fast president.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just trying to cover your bases, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's it.
Okay, buddy.
Oh, sure, sure.
All right. So let's go to First Coastal. Peniman's Point Limited Partnership at thirty-six Second Act Lane in the Village. You, you can come over here for this one.
Thank you.
Thanks for your participation in here earlier.
I didn't know it was gonna be so popular.
Well, you, you know, you're, you're involved in all this extracurricular, uh, activity going on here. Peniman's Point Limited Partnership.
Okay. Uh, thanks for, uh, hearing me this morning. Uh, you should have in your packet a drawing, uh, showing a, uh, a request to, uh, build a catwalk. Into a, a Peniman's Cove, which is an offshoot of Shinnecock Bay. Um, the, just, uh, for board information, uh, the upland portion of this has already been built. It was built, uh, under permits from the village club, um, and, yeah, Eric State D E C. And then, uh, after that was done, the owner, um, asked me to amend, uh, those permits to extend this, uh, this tie-in. Now, I think this came before, uh, the board a while back and, uh, there was a question about, uh, the, uh. Relationship, uh, between, um, this dock and the adjacent dock. And, um, also with regards to whether this had the proper separation with regard to the blue book. And so, um, I repaired this, uh, diagram so I could show you the, the distance between the two permitted docks. The, the one, uh, was not built, but it did get a permit from this board for that configuration. And as you can see, there's, um, you know, a significant distance between those two structures, so there's no, uh, potential for interference. And the use of both of that. Uh, the other thing had to do with, um, you know, the proximity to the property line.
That's probably.
And, um, so what, what I did was, um, I looked at the subdivision map as well as the survey. So this is a repairing deed. It runs to the high water line of Peniman's Cove or Shinnecock Bay. So that is actually, the mean high water line is actually the boundary of the property. And we're more than ten feet from any, uh, any of the boundaries. So we, 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 we comply with, with the blue book separation requirement because, uh, because, uh, the repairing deed places. The mean high water line in a way that, uh, creates a boundary on that would, would be, I think, the northern. The northern boundary of the property. And other than that, it's pretty, you know, uh, it's simply a catwalk.
Calculate that?
Yeah, I remember, I remember looking at this a couple times, that, what was it, like a hundred and ten foot catwalk or something? There's a monster catwalk over like wetlands and like little forests.
Fifty-five feet.
Right. She was really big, yeah. Well, well, that's, that's the upland portion, which I said is, is permitted and built.
That's.
The ten foot thing is, I don't wanna.
And then on G I S, I do remember it was, if you can pull it up on G I S, there was, when you looked at it that way. And the extended property line of the neighbor there did look like it, it, it went over.
We're back on this one again?
Yeah, that's it. So, what, what is it? I remember it was close. You had it angled out there also, I remember, which was better. But, uh, it's up the board's side whether or not it's, uh. It's over the ten foot. When, you know, with the property lines and, um. And, you know, the, the, uh, the mean high water is the property line and because, uh, this is, you know, a curved shoreline. If you, you know, take the property to, uh, should be, is that to the west, I guess? Um, and, you know, it's, it's a cove, so, you know, to extend one or more property lines strictly, uh, along the axis that comes from the upland. Um, you know, is not appropriate. The object in, in a cove, per setting like that is what they call the rule of the, of the pie. Where you extend that to the center, uh, of the cove area and everybody gets their fair share of access. So, I mean, if, if all you did was extend the property line, um, on the left side of this property, you just extended that. Along its axis, um, you know.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily the property line we own the water.
Right.
We own the property under the water.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, in order, in order for you to make that pie, that pie to work. Like, is that, is that how you're trying to gain the ten foot on either side, basically, is utilizing our property?
Well, um, the, the application utilizes trustee property no matter which one you put it, whether we put it directly at the very end of this, uh, of this pie-shaped property.
When they're dying for a, a dock here.
Well, it's, you know, there, it's, it's a, it's a catwalk, really.
So we're. So based on this, so this is. This is a really unique. Here's your property lines, right?
Yeah. This property over here ends right here and this property ends here, so.
Does this look to be violative of our, uh, regulations, Mark?
Well, if you were extending, you know, the property line, you could say it was, 'cause it's angled out in front of where that other property line be extended.
Yeah.
Time I checked on G I S.
I mean, even every other application that we've ever had has never allowed anything going in front of the ten foot of the other property.
But it is, you know, it's, it's a minimal and it's angled off to the side, so.
Never even see it. Is there a way to, um. Differentiate this based on the circumstances, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna have a, this is, because the ten foot. Becomes problematic for us.
I understand that.
We, you know, but.
Why can't they just dead end it right on the beach?
Oh, that's where it is right now. Uh, they'd like, they'd like to get into the water. Um, what I would say to you is that the nearest state.
You can't walk down the beach?
Yeah, they can, okay? But, but they have a repairing right of access and, and they'd like to have it.
Well, they have it already.
Well, they'd like to have it, you know, the ability to wharf out is, is a repairing right and they'd like to exercise that right.
Over the other purpose, persons.
Exact, exactly right. So what I would, what I would suggest to your council and to the board is, there's a case called Perico versus Weinstein. Where the New York State Supreme Court has ruled that in a situation such as this, the rule of. Where the New York State Supreme Court has ruled that in a situation such as this, the rule of, of the pie is what is applied. And, and the case is very clear. They go through the, the evaluation of it. And if you'd like me to lay that out on this parcel, I'd be happy to do that.
See, the thing is, I, I think what we wanna do is, because like, like Ed said, it's very, it is minimal where you're at right now. And it's just that in other areas, we do have a problem because people are trying to push things to the left and to the right because they don't wanna look at their neighbors and it, it becomes a problem. We, I think we, like, the rule of pie and I, I do like pie, you know, but I think we also wanna use the rule of common sense. Right? Common sense. So if we can, if we can kinda do the pie with the common sense somehow and not create a dangerous precedent of, well, they did this here, you know what I mean?
Right.
Because that's where we.
Can I ask you, I know the Army Corps has a different standard. What, did you get their permit?
Uh, that, that permit, uh, both the, the D E C and, and the Corps permit went in at the same time as you got it. I expect I'm gonna hear back from them. I think maybe what.
Because I know they have a fifteen foot set.
They want five more.
Yeah, I, I think they're gonna actually be fine with this because it, the, the mean high water is what controls the property line. Um, but what I would suggest and what I, what I will do, uh, is I will take that Erko versus Weinstein case. I will apply the, the criteria that the court established and lay it out on this, on this.
I think that's, that's, that would be good if you could do that because this needs to be different, differentiated as a unique situation that you're pointing out, I think is really important. So if you can do that.
See, see, I do have an issue. Uh, if you wanna go straight out further, I feel that, you know, the character of the area and, and the, and the fishing that goes on there, going further out to the west, I believe, going would be problematic. Putting it where you proposed right now would be the, i- if the board would agree, it would be the best, uh, sighting of the, uh.
Well, I think he needs to do what he, what he says.
Well, let's, give, give us the information and we can make a better decision.
I'll, I'll make a drawing and lay it out and that, yeah, I think that makes sense.
I think that's a way.
And you can email that over to our Lombardo, our Joe Lombardo, our special counsel.
Do you have a citation on that case?
Uh, oh, I'll send it to the case. Yeah, if you could send that.
Okay, please.
Aram, if you would, send it to me too, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
This way we can definitely get some information here.
This is a, this is a problematic, uh, thing for us with these docks on these small pieces of property or pie shaped pieces of property. So.
Well, as I said before, we're kinda running out of big pieces of property. It's an hour into the small pieces of property.
Yeah.
Devil is in the detail. This is also, um, and also forward to, uh, to both attorneys and the board, the, um, O G S, Officer General Services, who owns the under, you know, manages the underwater land for the state of New York, has a whole series of how you allocate, uh, dock space in varying situations. And that's, I've used it many times over the years that I, I found it to be a great download. So I'll send that along as well, just so you can see it. Cause there's, believe it or not, there's a half a dozen different ways to do this.
Well, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna us to set a precedent that we're gonna be sorry for moving in the well future.
I'm not thrilled with it, but I understand.
Well, let's look at it. Let's look at it because it needs to be set aside from, it's a unique situation. I think it needs to be seen as that because you don't wanna set the precedence. You wanna be able to.
We gotta make sure that we're not setting a precedent.
That's my point. That's my point. That's why I wanted to provide that. That's why counsel's gonna look at that. And that's why I said, this is great. I like pie. The common sense also needs to come into play.
All right, will do. Thank you all for your time this morning.
Yep. And thank you for your information at the other.
Yes.
Two, uh, issues. All right.
We have, that's all you have today?
Well, it's.
Wow, that's very. Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna hold it until we, Aram's gonna get us some more information.
I think I told the council quite a bit on this one.
Yes.
What, um.
So next one you have.
Is this, eh, this is, this one here?
That's, that's Scott's. Goes into your, it goes into your file.
Yes, mine. Yes, mine.
Um.
Yes, your second one.
Yeah, yeah. John, uh, Gilligan, uh, forty one Oak Lane, Hampton Bays, uh, Ernie Spellman. He's not here?
Yeah.
Same.
He's not here.
The same issue.
Yeah, yep.
Do. It's, that's there. Well, we, we've discussed it and it was issues with the material. Correct, James? So, so there's still issues that we need to discuss with the. I thought we just all missed.
Was this the one that had the big fence and they're just re-basing the bulkhead?
Yeah, you guys looked at the bulkhead and you forgot the bulkhead that there is.
Something missing.
The pure, uh.
It's replaced a hundred and eighteen, uh, feet of, uh, bulkhead using Navy style structure along with two twelve foot returns, shore guard, four twenty five vinyl or similar marine grade, uh, with marine grade. And in, uh, galvanized hardware, bulkhead will be accompanied by a ten foot, uh, non-fermentation buffer zone, backfill of approximately thirty yards of clean sand along with, um, island, uh, natural gravel and native vegetation grasses, uh, to the engineered plans. They propose to install four by one hundred, um, uh, foot long, uh, open grade deck, decking, uh, access to the bay with the engineered plants. Pier can, will be constructed using non-treated green heart and tropical lumber along with, uh, marine grade galvanized hardware. There will be two sets of tie off piles, one on the east and one on the west side of the pier. We also propose a four foot by, uh, thirty foot grade level ramp, uh, from the, uh, sloped backyard leading through the non-fermentation buffer. We will install pass and repass sliders on, uh, the bulkhead, um, nest to the, next to the bulkhead. So pretty much, I think we got everything we need there.
Do we have the planting, like, the plant spacing and all that determined and what species?
That part I don't know.
And then also, this, this wasn't the one we had a wrestling match with, uh, there was a deck for cooler.
No.
No, I think it's all, this was blue book compliant, this, this one here? It's all blue book compliant, this one here?
Just the, the plans for, uh, pier. Do you have the plans for the pier, Stan?
I thought we had, we had, we thought we didn't have them, but we did have them, I thought. I thought we have the plans for the pier.
Well, I, I don't have them up.
This is the. I thought we. Thought we cleared this up. Yeah, there's, there's an engineered stamp plan, it's right there.
On the pier?
Uh. Bulkhead, bulkhead, wait. Stuck, stuck together. Bulkhead, 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 bulkhead. Bulkhead, bulkhead.
What's that right there?
There's the pier. There's, there's, there's the pier.
Yep, this, this sheet's stamped. Actually, yeah, it, I see.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a stamp.
Yep.
Yeah. For what this is.
That's the pier.
Licensed professional engineer.
Orlando, he's an engineer.
And you're good with the, the pier, so.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, yeah.
Right, you saw that, yeah.
We have everything here then.
That's.
And there's no, uh, mention of, uh, treated lumber in here. So that was the, uh, one of the other sticking points. So I like to advance it.
See, Charlotte's indicating it's blue book compliant.
Okay.
So that, that was my only worry is just not having it. It's not in here.
Yeah.
No.
We'll have to scan that. Charlotte's gonna scan it.
Yep.
All right.
So we're good to go then.
Okay, so advance that. So now we have, uh, Peconic. Wait, yeah, that's the only one we have for that person. Now we have Peconic Environment Metal, which is three sixty one Dew Road. Preach.
Morning.
Morning.
That sounds pretty straightforward. They just wanted, uh, to increase the road of fencing and turn it five. There's no infringement on the access to me grass on the earth inside, so. I don't see a problem with it myself.
Okay. Advance.
Should I, should I, is it that correct?
Did his job.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you.
Next one we have, we have, well, you have one that's not coming, right?
Yeah, Harry, Dirty Harry.
Not coming. And then we have shoreline bulkhead and captain's neck realty office.
Oh, so, um, I, I have to do a, um, so I just, there's, so I also, the, um, applicant, applicant can make it today, so, um.
It's on hold. Okay, so that's on hold.
Forty five seater, uh, this is, it's, we'll, we'll, we recommend, uh, the applicant wants to shorten their catwalk and also, uh, change dimensions. So I disagree, James and Tronis, stand each one, uh.
Yeah, so shortly after you guys have approved this, um, application, uh, the D E C asked them to reduce the width of the, uh, both the bridge and the catwalk on the next, next day. By one foot at four feet instead of five feet, um, and also the length of the catwalk included as well.
Yes.
So it's gonna reduce the overall square foot of the project, reducing the fees. So he's looking to amend it, um, so that you can lower the fees and be compliant with the D E C.
So he's, he's filing for a modification?
Well, that's the, that's the question for the board, um, since it's not in.
We approved it.
We've approved it, but it hasn't been paid to him yet because he hasn't paid the fees.
But we, but now we're modifying the plan.
We're just amending it to make a smaller footprint of the project.
Right. So it's, what's a.
Well, the height doesn't change. But it's, we're, so we're getting into a money thing. So we're, are we gonna not charge him for a modification?
That's the idea. That's the question.
Or are we gonna allow him just to amend it?
Yeah.
So he, he jumped the ball. He basically came to us before the D E C approved the project, correct?
Apparently.
What?
Yeah, they, they've been changing.
But normally we wait for a full approval of the D E C before they come to the South End.
Well, wasn't.
Necessarily wait for the D E C. We issue our.
You gotta, you gotta come up, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean.
We recommend, we normally recommend that you get all the other entities before you come to us so that way we don't have this problem.
Correct. Well, it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah.
It comes to that.
So Ja- James, the, the original, uh, fee for the larger structure.
It is.
What was the fee versus the new fee for a small structure? And if it's amended.
Well, the thing is, you have to pay a modification.
Well, the, the point being, we issued a permit for him to do X, which is what he asked for.
Yeah.
Whether or not he had permission from the D E C, he was asking for X. If he built less, if he builds less than what the permit allowed, we certainly weren't going to fit, we would certainly not fail him for not conforming to the, to the permit requirement because he was within the confines it was allowed.
But he hasn't, but he hasn't done any work yet.
Well, but the bottom line is, is that's his permit and.
Yeah, his permit is, is, is issued upon the square footage of, that he.
Right.
Applied for.
Yeah.
Correct.
I mean, so I wouldn't see where there would be any money doing owing him. I mean, if he could get the D E C to, if, if he appeals to the D E C and they give him that, back that point, would he then have to come back to us and a man that has.
Yeah, right. I mean, yeah, so we're spending money in house. We're spending money with our staff to amend permits here.
Yeah.
That's the way I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it as, not being a bad guy, not being a good guy.
So I'm looking in terms of issuing a refund.
But the question is, right, but are we modifying this now? Were you paying a.
It's not really a modification.
So he doesn't, he doesn't need a modification is what you're saying?
Right.
So he doesn't have to pay a modification fee. It's done.
This is one of these weird, like, events where we're allowing more than what the D E C would be allowing. Usually it's the other way around.
Well, he's, he's paying for a lot more than what he's gonna put in.
Yeah.
With the dimensional fees.
Right.
So I, I don't, yeah, so I don't.
Four foot by whatever times equals.
I don't think it's charging an amendment fee on top of that.
Well, we, we wouldn't have to amend it, yeah.
Well. He can take our permit to the bank. The D E C is not gonna complain if he builds according to their specs.
Yeah, but he's looking to amend it so it matches.
He doesn't wanna pay the dimensional fees for the bigger thing without paying for a modification fee. So I think, right, he needs to modify it.
So he wants us to modify the fees, so we do have to modify it now. So we're back in working on this again.
Yeah, but it's still costing our, uh, it's costing, costing this rush fee money to do.
So then it's a modification fee and then a proper dimensional fee. So that's how it's gotta be done. He's gotta do a modification and then we amend it to make it what it is. So he asked us to file for a modification. It's our permit is issued and then we adjust the dimensional fees to match what we're permitting.
Which is gonna be substantially less than the original.
Correct.
Even with the amendment fee of four hundred dollars.
I'd say that's, I'd say that's what we have to do.
It's one of the lines. It's one of the cases charged.
That's right.
That's it.
But then when we send the dock inspection down there.
Matches.
To match what we permitted, it, because I remember George, he did inspections in the dock.
You've had an issue before where violations were issued because people came.
Yeah, George, George was on the line. He had to fail it if the person built less than what was allowed.
Right, right.
That's right.
And I tried to explain to him that just because they did build, it doesn't mean.
Right, so based on the fact that this is not, it, we approved it, but he hasn't paid it. It's not out the door yet. He can pay for a modification. We can amend it, go like trustee Merrick said, the staff's gonna go back to work on it, change everything back to matching, exactly. And then dimensional fees will mimic what he picks up that day.
One more of stuff there to some degree.
All right, so we'll work with counsel as to make sure the fees are adjusted, correct? Because he's gonna be paying five hundred dollars.
For, it, it, right, so, cause we gotta go back to work on it, exactly.
And then you guys are good to advance it pending the modification. It worked.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we.
And we have stamped plans because it's gonna be a new set of.
Right, right.
Which I believe we have. We can take a look at that right now.
Well, yeah, you don't.
You don't have to do it now, but it's gotta be.
Yeah, but it's just make sure it all matches. You wanna back on for the next work session and review or? Yeah, I mean, I.
Well, we.
We don't, I don't think we need it on for the next work. I don't think we need to back on.
Stamp, stamp plans and approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, just on.
Charge the modification fee, adjust the square footage and approve upon that we have stamped hand plans, matching the new.
Matching that.
Yeah.
And that could go on for resolution of the stamp plan approval.
I will, we'll, we'll put it under P.
Yeah.
Stamp plans, so it'll be on the next workshop, to review the stamp plans.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And then as long as they're good.
And if the modification pay work.
Done.
Thanks, James.
As long as everything is acceptable to Charlotte and you, we can just do what we have to do.
I see, and I saw, I saw Mr. Mack nodding his head back there, so I think he got his seal approval as well.
I went for.
Yeah, but we're, we're going to be.
It's kinda, it makes sense, you know?
Scott, we're gonna be in the process of hiring a dock inspection person and we're gonna have to go over all these little nuances so we don't get glitches.
As soon as later today.
I mean, I mean, more, I mean, I know that, that's, that's fact and that it, this costs us money.
Well, it's just, let's just keep this in mind because we've had this.
Yeah, I know. We can't, yeah.
People will pull the, the permit for a year and not pay the dimensional fees, wait for the, uh, Army Corps or the D E C and then wanna.
Change it. Amend it.
Amend it. So it's, it happened before and so we've been like.
Yeah, all over the map. Well, now if we've approved it, they're asking for us to approve to counsel Lombardo's point. You know, we've given you what you've asked for, you know?
Are you asking for something?
Yep.
Right, so now we're, we're back to work to your point, right?
For bookkeeping.
Yeah.
Why.
The flexibility of, of the booking and program that we have to use it.
But you can't talk from there. You gotta talk from here.
All right, okay. Yeah, I think we're good.
All right, so we're, we're, we're good with that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next one is, uh, Helen Fair from fifty eight Zapp Avenue in Eastport, represented by the owner, who really doesn't have to be here. You can tell us.
I spoke to her about it and, uh, yeah, I believe we have all the stamp plans and it was just an expired permit that we were going to be renewing. Um, no changes to the permits.
Blue book compliant. It was an oversight.
Right.
So we just wanna make it all proper. Dotting I's and crossing T's is very important.
Right.
So this could advance.
Okay.
And then, um, we already did, did one ninety one, right?
Yep.
You did. Okay, so the next part, general permit applications for determination for final stamp plans. I have James Price, twenty eight East Rampastor Road in Hampton Bays. Enviro permits. See that? And you have Susan Rose.
Susan Rose, fourteen Carmo Road, Hampton Bays. Susan Rose, fourteen Carmo Road Hampton Bays. Stamp plans with that. We're good, okay, can it advance it?
Advance that, and you've got them on Michael Vincent. Good, stamp plans, yep. All right.
We're good.
Concludes our.
Advance, advance, man.
Concludes our work session agenda for this morning, we can uh, we can adjourn and go to exec. And um, we can be on our way, if anyone has anything else, we're good.
Um, the Army Corps started pumping the intercoastal.
Army Corps is starting to uh, do their, their uh, work, uh, their setup. Just as you enter the Quad Canal, there's a lot of gear there.
From the east or from the west, from the, from the east, right?
Yeah, there, yeah, so if you're heading from Shitticock and you're making your way into uh, the Quad Canal heading west, you're gonna. You're gonna bump into that and you're gonna see a, uh, some equipment also on the South Hampton Town in the western side of Shitticock. You're gonna see that and you're gonna see a lot of pipes laid out, because you have material getting pumped as far as uh, west of Shitticock. As well, uh, with this part of the uh, the project, so if you're taking your boat and you're, you're gonna make your way up and down the Quad Canal. Just beware, you're gonna see a lot of equipment and you're gonna see, you know, all kinds of pipes and things and you're gonna wanna transit that.
Very cautious.
Carefully, very cautiously, you're in a six mile an hour no wake zone as it is, so you should, you know, really uh, pay attention, so. That's a good project, they're starting to the west and they're gonna work their way to the east, but that is underway. Uh, that project uh, is scheduled to be finished within two months, uh, with all the logistics and whatnot. Um, thousands and thousands of cubic yards of uh, of uh, fine, you know, nice sand. Um, to get our intercoastal waterway back to specifications, um. As per the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, it's H and L contracting that has been awarded that contract. And they are diligently working on it, it's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
So um, to the public.
But they're gonna be putting the sand up at Tiana Beach on the.
There's gonna be something on the Tiana Bay side, it's going.
As we talked, they're pumping it.
Right, they're, they're pumping over there.
Any more on, in front of it?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
About thirty-eight thousand cubic yards of it, the, the lion's share of that project is gonna be.
In front of that, dude?
It's gonna be in what they call well, see west of Shitticock Inland Area, that's where the lion's share of the project's gonna be. Some of it is going to um, it's gonna go to Tiana Bay side. Some of it is gonna bolster up some trustee properties that are like south of the Shaguam Arena. That whole area where you've got a bunch of road ends and properties there, the trustees to bolster that up, so. Three, there's three uh, spots there, this is an Army Corps project. You, you're changing an Army Corps project, it's literally an act of Congress to do that, so you cannot go out of. You cannot go out of what is deemed to be the federal, you know, recognized channels and this is what the project's gonna be. You have some, you know, great, obviously, local uh, knowledge that is, you know, directing this and. Working on this and it's been a long time coming for our community to get this project advocacy by this point for years and years. To finally get to this point, um, because these areas are, are intercoastal, they needed to be uh. dredged and you had people that at certain tides mid to low that were hitting bottom there, so this is really important for our community to have done. But you do, right now, you have to be careful, if you're out there running around, you know, you know, pay attention and don't, you know, don't get caught up in any of that gear.
And the shitticock locks are fixed.
Which is, and, and coincidentally, the same contractor, H and L.
Yeah.
Fixed that canal locks and I think he did it in, in a really good time, I know, we, we thought the estimates were gonna be a lot greater. So it's always better to beat your estimates and um, that is a, a big help, cause you find out. You know, how, you know, badly the Shitticock Canal locks affects commerce, especially at this time of the year. Um, aside from everybody wanting to go fishing or cruising and recreationally, you have people that make decisions on where they're gonna have their services done. And their winter haulouts done, and you, you know, as you got the telephone calls from people and the emails. You saw how greatly this waterway does affect commerce, um, and not to mention recreation and fishing and being that we're such a maritime community. Um, you know, thanks to the county exec and everybody at the county that was able to get on that right away, get good contractors that knew what they were doing. And get us back in business, it even greatly affected our pump out program, because we rely on the county and the points to the north. Of the canal locks to pump out, our pump out boats, to make sure that we don't have that effluent going into our base. So it has an environmental effect to us as well, so um, it's that like, you know, ripple effect of things that occur. Maybe some folks don't realize how one thing affects another thing, but thankfully, it's all good now, everything's good, so. That being said, we have some executive discussions to have and if there's none anymore, I'll, I'll take a motion to.
Good.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, seconded by Trustee Barrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go into exec for the discussion of uh, contracts, uh, litigation and personnel issues, we'll see everybody this afternoon.